I would like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, June 20, 2016. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor, here.
Aldi Kitzler.
Here.
Alder Bussie.
Here.
Alder Spade.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder's phone question, would I excuse?
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the June 6 meeting?
I'll second.
There's a motion in second, are there any corrections, deletions?
Yes, Mayor, there is one.
All right.
I'm sorry, let me get that motion in here quickly. It was brought to my attention that on, let's see, the page seven, Alder Woods' report, the Ad-Hoc Committee met in San Prairie, so I've changed that to from in Farley.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, anything else? If everyone's okay with that one change, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Public appearances, we have one registrant, we have Mr. Daniel Connors, 4814 Goldfinch Drive, Madison, Wisconsin, would like to register in favor of synthetic chemical compounds, and would like to speak for informational purposes. If you could step to the podium, please, Mr. Connors, and welcome.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Danny Connors, I'm the one along with Nate Peterman and other Madison local members are spearheading the direct legislation drive in the city of Manona to reduce the marijuana crime down to $1. And I have passed out an informational packet with how to do the action, the state statutes and the ordinance that we are putting in for it.
Saw a mailing, I got a card today.
Absolutely. We switched it up a little, we went initially all apartments, and it was hard to get door to door, so we mailed the rest of the voting list of all the residential housing. Tremendous turnaround from that, so it's used on the main content, and has collected 75% of signatures. I would be willing to answer any general questions if you have them.
How many signatures are required, do you feel?
15% of the last gubernatorial race, the figure here, without clerk actually checking at the time, we put them in at 719.
Okay, and within a certain period of time?
60 days.
60 days from May through?
Whenever, when we physically put them in, we have that campaign window of May 15 to July 13.
Okay.
But it was stagnant in the first couple of weeks, but it's been tremendous in the last few weeks.
And so you'll turn those into city clerk, is how this will work, Joan, and you'll make sure?
Okay.
Yeah, that's, at that time, did we get enough signatures or?
And then that would be placed on the November ballot?
I believe so, I would have to look, I'm not ever into doing.
You do have an option under the law, have 14 days after they certify, council can enact it immediately, and if they don't do nothing in that 30 days, then it has to go to the vote.
When you say enact it, that the council has the option to just pass the recommendation without even putting it on the ballot?
Correct, unaltered.
Okay.
And by the law of direct legislation, at the end of two years, the city council can change it.
Okay. I thought if it goes to ballot.
Yes, same, either way.
Either way, okay. Any questions or clarification from Mr. Connors? Thank you, this is helpful. Thank you. No one else for public appearances section, then declare the public hearing section closed. Consent agenda, we have a number of applications for operators licenses, is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say pass. Council action items, unfinished business, item 1A is consideration of ordinance 6-16-679, prohibiting synthetic chemical cannabinoide, which was brought forth by the Public Safety Commission. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Just as a sidebar, I did an interview with Channel 3, they're following this story today because it was in, it was in the news.
You want to tie it in with us?
Yeah, there seemed to be some confusion, and again, yeah, again, the, I think because the word cana is in the word, but it's two totally different things between cannabis as marijuana and synthetic chemical cannabinoid, and I've done research since the last time, and I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I mean, that is the chief difference, is this is a chemical, it's disastrous effects on the body, this has nothing to do with marijuana.
And subsequent to the last meeting, you may have noted in the media and the paper this weekend, City Madison came down pretty hard on a gas station chain that was selling this, and this ordinance, again, mirrors Madison's ordinance, which mirrors state law, and the one thing that I guess I just want to put a point of clarification, I think it was just the wording, but when Chief Estranga had said that the DA's office is not prosecuting these, it's, that kind of got my attention as to, the meaning of that was, they, in their pecking order of the priorities, this has not been as high, it's not that they don't want to, but as I've researched, we have the smallest staff of any county DA, I mean, they're really up to their eyeballs, I think, and so it wasn't one that I was like, whoa, why would they not prosecute somebody, it's just, it's a matter of resources and priorities, so it wasn't at all to reflect on our district attorney's office or the work they do, so this is some bad stuff, is what I've learned, and it's not moderate, you know, you don't know what you're taking in, so. Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Moving on to new business, 2A, you'll note start for immediate action is consideration of 2016-17 beer garden dates for Badger Bowl Incorporated at 506 East Badger, Madison, Wisconsin, but in this case designated as Manona's Village Lanes at 208 Owen Road, brought forth by License Review Committee, is there a motion? Will you suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
For approval.
Second. Discussion. Alder O'Connor?
I know part of the reason we were waiting on this a little bit was because they had a couple of dates in June, were there any problems?
There were no problems.
Additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item B, noted start for immediate action is consideration of Resolution 16-6-2108 authorizing the issuance of $1,796,850 in taxable tax increment project revenue bonds as part of the TID 9 project, brought forth by the finance director, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move and suspend the rules.
Second. Motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move.
Second. Motion in second. Mark?
Yes, the last meeting, you authorized myself to start working with a state bank for the purchase, negotiating the loan to purchase inland boating, so I came back with, this is coming back with the rates, we got 3.11 is our annual rate, cheers, October 1, 2018, this is to purchase inland boating business and the facility, we are closing on that, if this goes through, we're closing on this on Thursday, we'll be closing, we'll take ownership on it probably on Thursday, we, this, the 3.11 might sound a little higher than what you assume when you hear a non-taxable loan, you know, non-taxable, they are a little bit lower interest rate, but taxable, so this is right around where the taxable rate would be, this is outside of our debt limit, so this is a very good rate for those reasons. The state bank has been excellent with us working for these, and they have the other loans too, dealing with the riverfront project, so they've been a great partner in this, this is a great loan, this is a great percentage that we're getting with this type of loans, other than that, I don't have anything else, but they've all said they've been excellent.
I will note, earlier this evening, a person on finances was approved. Any questions, Mark? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spade.
Aye.
Alder O'Connor.
Aye.
Aldi Kitzler.
Aye.
Alder Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much, Mark. Item C is consideration of Resolution 16-6-2105 approving municipal court hours, brought forth by the municipal judge, assume city administrator little, who can address this?
Um, not sure. Not sure.
All right, so I guess we just look at what was provided in the packet, and see if there's any questions before it's brought forth. I guess I would just suggest somebody, the judge or who's ever asking for this, come and explain and justify why. Any questions from the motion?
There was no motion.
Or there wasn't a motion, but I mean, from the changes, all right, if you could just make sure someone attended the next meeting, please, thank you. Item 2D, start for immediate action is consideration of Resolution 16-6-2107 approving the purchase of fire department extrication equipment, is there a motion to suspend the rules, take this item out of order?
So move.
Second. There's motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Chief?
Good evening, this is for the purchase of extrication equipment that was in the capital budget for this year, this is only a partial purchase, this is for the hydraulic extrication equipment, basically this is the equipment that will be kind of tethered to the truck, the new truck, with hydraulic lines, the truck committee put this out to bid, we did have three vendors bid it, and the truck committee went through and did an extensive evaluation, both a hands-on evaluation of the equipment and a statistical evaluation of the equipment, looking at weight, ergonomics, the power of the tool, cutting of capabilities, that type of stuff, they, the truck committee narrowed it down to the vendor that's relying on apparatus, fire apparatus that we have here, like I said, it did go out to bid, and they narrowed it down to this particular set of tools, they will be evaluating a set of battery-operated extrication tools, it's kind of where the field is leading towards as battery-operated equipment gets better and better, it allows you to not be tethered to a truck or to a power unit, so they're meeting again on Wednesday and going over two different, doing an actual hands-on comparison between two vendors for the battery-operated equipment, this is specifically for the hydraulic-operated tools that are, that will be on the truck.
And if I might add why that's important, you will note, this came in at what appears to be half price from the capital budget, the batteries is the other half of the budget, so I asked Chief, he assures me he will stay under budget in total, but this isn't the huge savings it first looks like when you read it.
I apologize for that.
Nope, no apology.
You mentioned that this was only part of the?
Part of the whole package.
The whole package, correct.
Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Chief. Reports of committees, commissions, boards, and all, item number one is the strategic planning update presentation brought forth by the wonderful senior center director Diane Mickelbank, and the soon-to-be Manona resident and parks director, Mr. Jake Van Nistelrooy, ladies first.
Welcome. Thank you.
And I've warned them, we're moving fast.
Very impressed. We can still get the last song.
I hope so, I hope so.
So I went through the strategic plan and addressed anything that was labeled at Parkinhead or had my name on it, so just going real quickly through some of those, responding quickly and promptly to resident concerns and questions, this has always been a priority in the senior center, I'm not aware of any concerns that people have, so we continue to do that and respond promptly. Increasing the use of technology, including the website and social media to inform the public, we keep the website updated for our programs and services with the calendar option on the city website, and we do a Facebook weekly update, make announcements on WVMO, and are also using more features on the My Senior Center electronic attendance system that we have, so we can notify our participants of things that they need to know.
Are you as happy with that as?
We love it.
Love, okay.
And since we've, Diane Wickerford has helped us out, she's kind of a statistical queen, and she's finding all kinds of new things that we can do with it, so it's been really great.
Great.
Huge help. Develop service standards, this was particularly timely to talk about for the strategic plan, the senior center goes through a state accreditation process, and in May, we were just reviewed, and we will be recommended to be state accredited through 2020, so I think that we're meeting those state standards, we are one of 43 senior centers in the state out of over 400 that are state accredited, so we kind of feel like it's worth the time and effort to go through that process, and we worked with the committee of participants and residents in Manona to help us go through those, so that was a really great process to go through. Interdepartment collaboration, this will kind of be repeated with what Jake reports on, we were asked to work together, the library, Parks and Rec, and the senior center, to look at the programs that we offer to make sure that we're not duplicating services. Shortly after the strategic planning process, we did that, and we continue to meet quarterly and look at what we're doing, looking ahead to the future, and how we can work collaboratively. So you've probably seen some of those efforts, we've got a storytime going on in the park before the concerts, I think storytimes happen at the pool, so we're looking at big events coming up and how we can work together, so I think that's really been working well. So those are things that are accomplished, looking at in progress, the meet and greet for new residents and existing community events, what the senior center has started, we worked with, it's called the Power Up Team, a volunteer group that went to be trained to kind of be leaders in our community, and they, with my help, we developed a welcome packet, and right now, anytime there are new Manona seniors in any of the senior housing facilities, they get this welcome packet with basically the park guide and city, or any city things that we can share from the Chamber of Commerce and senior center information, so it's a good way to get our word out, but we'd be happy to take along if there's a more citywide welcome packet that we can tag onto that as well. Utilizing the social media, not only are we doing more than we used to, but we continue to maintain those things, so that's kind of in progress. Finding ways to reduce energy and fuel usage, the only thing I could think of we can do here is there's only one light, I think, in our community center that isn't an auto shut off or turn on, so I think we made a request to get that done, otherwise I think we'd be pretty well there. And better use of, better use of data in decision-making, one of the recommendations through our state accreditation process was to do a little more in the evaluation process, surveys are not our favorite thing, but we're going to work on it, so they gave us some recommendations, and we're using a handbook through a Florida senior association, and some recommendations on how to evaluate our programs and overall services that we offer, so we're going to try to implement that fall of this year and really get it going, we can get it, kind of a system going through all of 2017, so work on that, yes. Any questions for me?
Who's heading up senior?
Brian.
Brian, okay, doing okay for him?
He is.
Because we can talk about him now.
Yeah.
If you have any problems, let me know. Now, on behalf of the city, I just want to, as always, thank you for the amazing job you and your cohorts do, it keeps growing, and someday, hopefully, you'll get an even better building when you get better mayor in here, so, no, great job, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other department that rivals the love that is shown.
Well, I know how much y'all like to hear me talk, so I'll go on for an hour, but it's such a nice night, we'll keep it really brief, stick to the sections that were assigned to the Parks and Rec Department, section 6AB, I think kind of handled a few, the biggest one was adopting the Parks and Open Space Plan, as you recall, this council did approve the plan in March of 2015, after a strenuous four, five-year process, I think, through several drafts, so that was a 2014 to 2018 plan, and so we will be starting soon on the next 2019 to 2024 plan in the coming months. And then the other one was talking about completing scheduled upgrades and improvements based on that Parks and Open Space Plan, and to the leadership of Mayor Miller and this council, we've done amazing things in our parks over the last five years in implementing projects from the Park and Open Space Plan, you know, starting in 2014 with Arrowhead Park Playground Project, Yonaida Park Shelter Improvement Project, in 2015, Lottis Park Improvement Project, and now this year, the Shulder Park Improvement Project. So through that planning process, I think it really highlighted those areas that were the highest need for improvement in the city, and collectively, we have been able to address those needs, and I think tonight is one of those examples of the proof in the pudding of what we bring to the city as far as people just using our parks, and this is the year that we've really seen the use in all the other parks where we've had improvements, so even going back to a park like Frostwoods Park that we put the playground in 2012, it's Destination Park, Lottis is certainly, you know, busy, 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 if you drive by at all on Saturday or Sunday, over these last couple of weekends, the lot is full.
Did you put those barrier barricades up there?
We did.
Because I saw they were parking on the mall.
A little parking on the grass issue on Saturday.
I mean, good news, bad news, good news, it's full, bad news, it's so full, they were parking all right through the flats.
Right, right. I mean, coming back, looking at overflow parking at another location or partnership with one of the businesses that has parking available on the weekends. So we continue to do that, we continue to identify those projects within the Park and Open Space Plan, the University project dealing with Huska Park is kind of the next big project that we'll be identifying within the Park and Open Space Plan and capital budget through 2017, 2018, and of course, Winnebago Park is always a major contributor of where we're looking at as far as our long-term improvements, along with upgrades to our lakefront parks, so that's what's coming down the pike, and the park board, I think, does a really great job in identifying those projects and plans and looking at what the priorities are going to be. So those are the two accomplishments, the interdepartment collaboration that Diane talked about, we do meet quarterly, we, I think it's honed in what each of our departments are doing, and that helps quite a bit, we've looked at some of our programs and opportunities for kind of the retired boomers, not quite ready for the quote-unquote senior center, so we've added pickleball into our tennis lessons, so pickleball's one of the up-and-coming programs, we've offered adult swim lesson program, so maybe not like a master's training, but older adults that are just looking at working on their swim stroke, we are doing a brewery tour this fall, to a couple of different brewery tours, a bus trip to Cheese Days in my hometown of Monroe, so I recommend, recommend to go on that, and so we're working with the senior department on kind of making sure that if we're offering programs or events, that they're not on the kind of the same schedule. Library, like we talked about, we've had storytime in the park, storytime at the pool, so one of the things in highlighting and marketing their programs within kind of our weekly email messages, I think it's a really good collaboration that we have with the department heads. And then just the last one, talking about program analysis and evaluation, one of the things that we're just, we're still working on, we are in, I don't want to say we're full to the brim of what we can handle right now with what we do, but we are, and that's one of kind of the last things of, this program's done, we take a breath, and we're already into the next session or next season, so we, obviously, I look at things from a financial perspective, on a revenue expense basis, we do occasional survey monkey feedback, it's usually clear as mud on those survey results, so we're looking at some better analytics of what we're offering, and as we move forward, what are the areas that we should be looking at. We're very blessed in Manona to have a lot of opportunities for kids, and so sometimes I think we might overprogram what we might offer, and we don't need to be offering maybe as many youth recreation programs, because there's a lot of different outlets. One of the things we just talked about at the Park and Recreation Board was a potential partnership with the Madison Youth Sailing Foundation, and it's one of those perfect examples of an organization that can provide boats and instructors where it's not something we, I would really want to entertain the city or the Parks and Rec Department doing, so how do we serve our community through those type of partnerships versus what we handle directly? And so that's something that we'll be looking at in 2017, and how we can manage our workloads from the full-time staff that we have, and keep the needs of the community in check.
Earlier this evening, at Person on Finance, Mark went through the first six months financials just to see how we're, and some of you may have been in here and heard, but two areas that are pleasant surprises, you know, nice surprises are Lottis Park revenues, I've spoken with Jake, and we have High Hopes, which is a collaboration between the Parks Department and the Police Department enforcing the licensing that's required to park and use that, and I think we'll find exactly what Jake had been saying, that for years, we lost a lot of money just because of the non-technical way we were doing that, and then second, thank God for this warm weather, the pool passes, I guess, are flying out the door.
We just surpassed $45,000 today, our budgeted amount for revenue was $38,000, that is the highest it's been since I've been here, and I'm going to check with Mark to see how far back it goes, because, and I'd like to think it's in large part to the hours of operation change that we instituted last year, where we're really open more for the general public to swim than we ever have been, including earlier times on weekends, and that seems to really have driven a lot of people, including our family, non-residents, which encourage people to use the pool, to buy the passes, so it's been, and, you know, having three hot weekends in a row to serve the season helps too, but a little bit of both is what we need back.
One sidebar, did I hear at Parks Board that you addressed dogs in the park?
We are going to have that discussion, yes.
Oh, okay, so it's not, it's not a final?
We talked about it, we're going to be having a public campaign over the next month with informational survey, you know, asking people to take the survey that will be online soon, starting in July, we will have a public input meeting to hear thoughts of residents, and then compile all that data, and the park board will make a recommendation to council on if it would be a possible.
Oh, I thought there had been a vote, okay, I'm sorry. And then the other thing is, I know this isn't fun for you, but usage of parks for getting access to private property, journeying private properties?
Correct.
It's been pretty contentious, and what did Parks Board do regarding that?
Parks Board made a recommendation to not allow any usage of parks by private contractors with ordinance revision with a significant fine for violation, so that'll, depending on whether or not we're looking to institute it sooner rather than later, if it comes sooner versus in the certification.
And are we okay on Graham?
Yes.
That will resolve itself?
Yes.
Okay. Questions? Alder O'Connor?
I'm just wondering, is there any news on the testing they're doing over at Manona?
Yes, we have gotten some results in, I think my interpretation is it's fairly favorable at the extent of the PCVs that were identified at the north section from Nichols North, where the heaviest concentrations were in certain pockets and nothing south of Nichols and I guess.
It appears to be good, but it's back in the DNR's court to see what they're going to recommend for remediation, but it does not seem to be widespread through the lagoon, which is good unless Jake stirs up the lagoon, so.
Do we have any idea how long it might take to go through the DNR?
We just got that through last week, I want to say it from Strand, that they were sending to the DNR, so.
I think they're finalizing the report to go up there, so.
Well, that's good.
Additional questions? And if you don't know Jake is, I don't want to jinx it, but it's, looks locked and loaded, right? Jake is purchasing a home within a stone's throw from the office, so it's great. He's never going to get away from himself.
We'll find you.
We love that. So, great job, people who, you know, Farmer's Market was just nuts with home talent. I am anxious to see what university might, because, boy, it was just packed in that park. It's a good thing, but it's a challenge.
It is.
So, all the parks. And tonight was great, so, thank you. Anything further for Jake? Good job. Reports? Alder O'Connor? Chief, excuse me, chief, was anything that you wanted? Yep. Lieutenant, if you have anything too? Okay.
Um, just a few things. Call volumes, EMS call volumes are up fourteen percent from last year to this year at this time. Uh, fire call lines are up fourteen percent. A new intern started June thirteenth, Emily Bain. She is from Janesville and so she'll be, she already has her firefighter one or firefighter two in her EMT base, so she'll be, uh, going into, you know, the paramedic class this fall. Talks are in progress right now with Fitchford, um, for access to, through the gateway to get our fire channel onto the DaneCom system, um, something that we budgeted for back in, like, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and supposedly DaneCom's ready to go live somewhere around Halloween. We'll wait to see if that happens. Um, just a comment. Not sure if you had, um, if you had seen in the newspaper, but the fire department went through dementia-friendly training and was certified as dementia-friendly, as I believe the Parks and Rec Department was, and a few of the others, so slowly moving towards getting everybody. So, yeah. The, we're working with, with SAFE, one of my, uh, assistant chiefs, uh, Chief Clint Linsmeyer is, um, the chair for, uh, with SAFE, which is the, um, Smoke Alarm, um, Education, Fire Alarm Education Coalition. Uh, we're working with the Senior Center to install smoke detectors in houses throughout, um, Manona that don't have, um, smoke detectors in them. I know they do have one scheduled, we'll need tomorrow to, it's a home that has no smoke detectors and, and all, those are the ones that we're keying up on first, trying to get, um, smoke detectors, in all of those, um, residents. I'm hoping that there aren't many that don't have smoke detectors, but I know we do have some that don't have the, um, state-required number of smoke detectors. So, we're working with Diane through the Senior Center.
This is a great goal.
Trying to move forward through and move it forward. There are, the, throughout the state, so with SAFE, um, got a grant for, through the American Red Cross for, I believe, nine thousand smoke detectors. And they've been, uh, sent out through all departments throughout the state. And, um, there's some, there's some qualifications that have to be met and, um, you know, the detectors have to be put in certain spots. We've had some, uh, residents call and want to, oh, we want one here, we want one there. As per the, the grant rating, they have to be installed in certain areas, one in each bedroom, one outside of each bedroom, one on each floor, so, um, explain that to them.
My understanding is you're going to be carrying these on the units that, when you're out?
We do carry smoke detectors on the...
Smoke detectors out front.
On, those are some smoke detectors that we got through a different grant. This particular set of detectors, um, and grant is, we go in, we, we'll make appointments so that we can go in and part of this, um, project is to go in and also educate. So, there'll be basically two teams going in. One team will be installing smoke detectors, the other team will be doing a, um, fire prevention education, um, portion, uh, talk with the residents, so. Moving forward on that. And then, the last thing that I want to say is likeness on Facebook. I've got one of our, um, newer hires does a phenomenal job, Alex Keifer, does a phenomenal job getting, um, posts on Facebook and updated. Um, he's, and he's doing stuff. He, they pull out the trucks this past weekend, took a bunch of different pictures of the trucks and loaded them up to Facebook and my phone has been going wild with all the people that have been liking the posts, so. We're, we're trying to get media-friendly or social media-friendly, so.
It's great.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, Chief? Anything you want. All right, thank you. And I think this has been brought up before, but because of what's happened in Blooming Grove, the chief has a full cadre of firefighters, both on the full-time and the volunteer side.
Yeah, I believe it's, it's in the, um, in my report for this, I think we're at the career volunteer, item all, um, fire and EMS, we're right about forty-nine numbers, between forty-five and forty-nine numbers, so.
Over a thousand likes on there. You are popular.
Right.
That's great. Thank you. Alder O'Connor?
Uh, CEA is meeting next Tuesday, the first meeting, so I'm not sure what's on the agenda.
Close session. Alder Spade?
Uh, I'll just mention that, uh, good news to report on transit, our, our ridership has just continued to...
Up to twenty-eight? Woo!
All right.
Nope.
And we're, we're over six, we're over an average of six riders per, uh, loop downtown.
Good.
And we've never been that high before, like in the recorded history of our, of our transit. So, you know, we've been fluctuating up and down and after the budget cuts that hit the state in, in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, we lost quite a few riders. But, uh, we've really just seen a steady growth.
Good.
So, it's good news.
Great. Alder Kitzler?
Uh, Library Board tomorrow and Public Safety Committee is canceled for Wednesday.
Alder Bussie?
Uh, Plan Commission Monday at seven o'clock here. Understand we're going to have a special appearance by someone on, on the agenda.
It's not that special.
Boy, that's, you, you've piked my interest.
Yeah.
It's called a tease in the radio business. It's called a tease, Mayor. Called a tease, all right. Um, City Clerk?
Um, with the help of, um, Aline, we mailed out a hundred and fifty absentee ballots today. Um, so that's, the process is starting. Off we go.
Back again.
City administrated a little.
Um, Mark and I will be at conferences later this week, so if you need anything, get us remotely.
Getting smarter?
Yes, we will be getting smarter.
That's good. We like that. Um, it's Music Week in Manona is, we can stall now since I see everyone's journeying, so we missed the music.
Darn.
But tonight was the first concerts in the park taking place. There will be three more of those throughout the summer. Tomorrow is, it's actually a City of Madison event, but Make Music Madison is taking off, but Manona has two participating. One, this facility, the library, starting, I believe, at about noon.
One o'clock.
One o'clock, uh, under the portico. There'll be live music for the entire afternoon, five or six different musical groups. And then, Rudebaga is participating and they start at ten tomorrow and they'll have music going throughout the entire day. Everything is free and there's about four hundred-plus musicians and bands scattered throughout Dane County, performing all day, hopefully the weather remains like this. Um, things go well at, as I mentioned, Huska Park. Um, Farmer's Market is just kicking, kicking butt, having fun with WVMO. If any of you would care to stop by, I'm always looking for Vic, I'm, excuse me, guest, to, to join the mayor's office hour. Um, a couple of things and, and I would ask Jake, and we've been in a string of things. There's been a, I don't want to say confusion, but, um, I think you've all been copied and being reached out about use of pesticides in the park. And Jake's very much on top of what's occurring on that. And, um, maybe at the next meeting, we can get the update and clarification on what's been happening and why it's happening and, and, and if we need to do anything differently or how we, we, um, look at that. And then, the other one was, I've been receiving quite a few questions about the parks and Graham Park, and we've been assured that's being taken, being addressed too. So, um, that's all I have. If there, do we have, yes, we do have appointments this evening? Appointments, we have Greg Anderson being reappointed to the parks, Dan Coyne to parks, Marie Weston returning to the Sustainability Committee, and Mary Anderson to the Library Board. Is there a motion for approval of this slate of volunteers?
Approval with one correction.
Okay.
I think Marie's last name is, uh, I don't remember.
Oh. Maybe correct. Second? Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointments have been made. Is there a motion for adjournment?
We'll adjourn.
Second?
I heard both, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.